Good morning. We're going to go ahead and get started and President will be joining us shortly, hopefully. Okay. This morning is our last town hall meeting. We've had three previously. This is your last opportunity to kind of get questions, answers, voice concerns, anything related to the Alternative Service Committee recommendations. All of the white papers and draft policy and procedure manual are all on the website. There is committee members sitting at the back. If you have a question that you want to ask but don't feel comfortable asking it yourself, there are note cards back there and pen and you can write your question down and the committee will be more than happy to pose it for you. I'm going to go through a brief PowerPoint and then we're going to open it up for questions and answers. Let's just get started. First, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the committee who has worked tirelessly for the last 10 months on this project. They've really done their research and they have looked in multiple locations for that information. They have taken what KU did back in 2005-6. They have taken the information that K-State and KU, or K-State and Fort Hays State and Pittsburgh State in some cases, at what they have proposed. And so they've really tried to make the best out of everybody's ideas and put them into one document. Okay. Key issues related to if we choose to transition to USS. The white papers cover compensation, discipline and protection systems, appeals board, performance appraisal, and recruitment. And like I said, they're all on the website listed right there as well as the policy and procedure manual. Please go out and read them. I will tell you, the policy and procedure manual is fairly short compared to the other regions, these universities, in the fact that if it's not changing, we didn't include it. So really, the only thing that you're going to be reading is something that has maybe a slight change or maybe a completely different change, but only the information that was changing is what we actually included in the policy and procedure manual or the sections that I had to edit. Okay, related to compensation, the committee has requested or is recommending that longevity be available to all USS employees. Right now, with state statute, anybody hired after a certain date in 2008 is ineligible for longevity once they reach their 10 years. So we are recommending that it be reinstated for all, no matter when their hire date was for USS. We're planning to move to a broadband salary plan versus the current steps and pay matrix that we have now provided by the state. And based on the survey results, we are going to go with a two-thirds across the board increase with one-third being based on merit and your performance evaluation. So to illustrate this, they also put a cap on that merit. So if ESU approves a 3% pay increase, everyone would receive a 2% that received a satisfactory or better evaluation, and then no employee would receive more than a 4% total increase based on our individual merit. And there's a really good illustration of that in the white paper. Okay. We would replace the state civil service board with a university appeals board that would be made up of Emporia State employees. The board would be mostly university support staff individuals and recommendations from that board would go to the vice president level. Performance reviews, demotions, and terminations can all be appealed. Job security, we will continue to do dismissals for cause just as they are now and layoff and furlough process will remain unchanged from what the current policy is for classified As far as the performance appraisal, there's currently a mandatory supervisory training that's required, but we would also add a new mandatory performance appraisal training for supervisors. So anyone that completes a performance evaluation on another employee would be required to attend this training. And it would be based on the new appraisal form that we would develop here that would hopefully be more tied more in with what we do here at ESU rather than the state form where a lot of information doesn't apply to jobs that we currently all hold. Okay, recruitment. It will continue to be posted to the ESU website. We will continue to offer veterans preference just like it is done now through the state. And then there will be an employee preference as well for here at ESU. And depending on how the vote goes, we've discussed visiting with the other regions, universities, and seeing if we could develop some type of employee preference amongst the regions that are choosing to go USS. So why consider the designation change? Emporia State would then be given the local salary flexibility and control and it would also give USS a bigger voice in university strategic directions. So with that, we will open it up to questions. We do have microphones. It's being recorded and will be put on the website so that those that can't attend can watch the video and hear what questions were asked. So in order for the sound quality to be good, please use the microphones. So I'll have one that we can pass around. And with that, we will open it up for questions. Ray Houck, President Shonron, Judy Anderson, and Ray Lover here from Human Resources. So we have a plethora of knowledge to answer your questions. So please, please, please.
Let's not go with knowledge. We have people here. Look at the excitement here. Just relax. Don't go all at once. Oh, by the way, let me, let's give a round of applause to the group who's put all this time in. They put a lot of time and energy behind this and we appreciate that. As I know, March 5th is a date, an opportunity for you individually to decide what is you think is to your best interest as you look forward for Emporia State University and enroll there. As you know, I believe all, we have what, ours next week and then later in April is Wichita State University. So others have already had their votes in. We talked about KU earlier. And so I think a lot of that's been some good discussions there, but just really appreciate all you do and we want to leave it open for whatever kind of questions you might have. I love the "I'm the Hornet" stuff. We've been doing that. In fact, I tell you, I was on a plane, a little donor meeting. It was a good donor meeting. It's always good when you leave money. And this was, it was a good one. And I was on a plane and someone goes, well, they saw my little "I'm a Hornet" pin. They said, "That looks like a hornet." I was in Denver. I said, "Yes, it is," very observant. They said, "I bet you work at a university." I said, "Yes, I do." And he said, "I've been at Emporia State University." And I said, "Well, yes, I do." And she looked a little bit, she goes, "No, you don't like a professor." She looked again, she goes, "No." She goes, "Yeah, I can't, what do you do there?" I said, "I do stuff." But I gave her my pin because I thought it was good. It just happened, you know how, you hear about six degrees of separation? Well, I think it's more like two or three. It would just happen, her niece is here, you know, and all that rule of relationships. So I said, "Well, that's not fair." I gave up my pin for nothing. But that's okay. I always have extras in my pocket. I've learned that.
So pins replaces business cards?
No, I still give up business cards, too. I did recruiting, I did talk to a mother or her son were coming back and they were talking about schools. I was giving them some ideas and he's interested in engineering. I said, "Well, we have a," you know, so I stopped talking about that. I've got two nephews who are both engineers. And as we're talking, he goes, "Well, I just don't know if going to big school would be really good for us." Well, I have an idea. How about pre-engineering? We've got these relationships with the other research universities in Kansas. He goes, "Oh, that would just be wonderful." And the young man looked, he goes, "Are the women cute?" I said, "Yes, they are very cute." Clearly, she's interested in engineering, he's not. All in how you look at it. Well, what questions do you have?
Well, I have one. And mine have already been addressed.
Okay.
Okay. Do our job descriptions like what I am stay the same and do will I change? Like I'm a senior administrative assistant, so if we get a raise, that stays the same or does that change?
I don't know, you can resource correct her.
Do you guys want to answer?
Or like if I change, then the, the way to go?
As we move to USS, if the vote passes, your duties, of course, would remain the same. And then we would analyze positions and compare those to the market rate. And then we would be looking at overall job descriptions and redoing those.
Okay, okay.
And placing them in appropriate compensation.
The title may change. It depends.
Right.
Again, I'm not trying, you have to make a decision internally, but you know, we create our own structure. And so as well, you have the ability then to adjust much more rapidly in terms of meeting the expectations of a position where right now it's done to a state. This would be another option so that the university could determine that and then adjust accordingly.
Okay, that sounds good.
Yeah.
I might, I might add just to what Judy said. That's the process that would occur over two to four years. Day one, you know, there won't be enough time to begin that between now and this, the start of the next fiscal year, but over two to four years, that's what, carrying it back to the slides that were up there. Is that a no?
Yeah.
You got a question? First off, I just want to say I'm personally for the change, but I just wanted to hear from the leadership. Basically, the way I understand it, the main change here is that the governing of the classified employees as they are now would switch from the state to the university. So I just wanted to ask the leadership if they could say why they want, because this doesn't directly affect you because you're not classified. So why are you for switching to this governing body?
Well, I think it may be thoughtful because I don't want to say for or for one or the other because that's a decision that you all have to make. But what I can say is having been here for a while, at least from my perspective and others will have other opinions, is the flexibility of doing things. Right now, I don't have the ability by law to consider a raise. I can't even reclassify those things. I just don't have the scope, none of us have the ability to do certain types of things. And so this process, this type would provide the university the opportunity to establish those type things and make the adjustments that we, you know, that are best to the, best interest of the institution. Again, I'm not trying to say one or the other, it's just, we don't have the flexibility to doing things right now. And this would allow the institution and this leadership and really all of you to have the ability to help us frame that differently in the future. Yeah?
When you talk about flexibility, does that mean our, like our supervisors, supervisors will have more flexibility to change their policies and duties and things like that or how will that work?
What policies are they changing?
Well, they're rewriting our policy book.
Okay. Well, I mean, I think that would be to some extent. I don't know what policies they would be, but you know, I think this group has been very actively involved in developing a policy manual. And so we'd probably go to that group first, those being classified, if they vote to USS in terms of what things make sense for that, for that group of individuals on campus. I mean, it's not much different than what unclassified they have or faculty, you know, the different groups on campus and they have certain policies and procedures they put in place. But the flexibility I'm really talking about is the ability to look at a position and decide that maybe this position needs to be at this next level. And we don't have the ability to actually do that right now where it might, like for instance, it's called a promotion. You know, someone's, I'm sure you never, none of you would like that, but you know, that's the types of things that would provide some more flexibility that we don't currently have just because of the nature of it. Not a criticism of it, that's just the nature of it. So I'm not certain in terms of supervisors. I know there was some interest in being sure that supervisors had adequate, even additional training, especially in terms of how they assess the performance of folks. And so I think that's probably really helpful. I do, I will say that I'm appreciative of the fact that any question really go to the highest, to the vice president level. And I think that then gives plenty of attention where it needs to be.
I have another question about your grievance policy where you, you go through the channels and here it would stop at ESU, but what level does it stop? I mean, is it human resources?
It starts through, it starts through HR just like it does now. I believe the policy calls for it to finish with the final by the vice president, doesn't it? I believe so.
Would there be a time limit that they can call you back? Because I've called HR before and like almost every time and either get no answer or it's weeks, months before they get back to them. How, is there going to be a set time? Like you have to be called back within so many days?
Well, the appeal process specifies a maximum.
But if they don't call you back, I mean, you can't, you can't lodge a complaint if you don't get a call back, right?
Anything related to appeals though, has written timelines along with it. As far as any other questions?
But the employees' responsibility to get them to contact you back though, right?
Do you mean to initiate?
When you first, to initiate? Lodge a complaint, do you have to do that in writing? Can you call them or how, what would the process be to get things rolling?
The appeal process is in writing. So you, you would file your appeal in writing.
Okay.
And then there are specific limits in terms of when the response is issued.
It depends on that. Right. And the point that Judy's just making is that it also sort of depends upon the complaint. But what we're talking about in terms of the policies are going to address particularly appeals. They're also going to address formal grievances. So other concerns that would be expressed that wouldn't necessarily fall within the formal process would, would be subject to conversations. But the actual appeals, the formal grievances would follow the processes that are outlined just like they do now. And when you take a look at the policy manual right now, there's a grievance policy and there are particular steps. And if you follow those, those particular steps, then that initiates that timeframe. That does not change. So I guess what I'm hearing is sort of distinction between customer service versus the formal official policy. So I, from a customer service standpoint, it sounds like there's some things that we can, we can definitely talk about. But from the policy standpoint, those timeframes remain very similar to what, what the current requirements are. Did that answer your question? Okay. Because I think it's a matter of the formality of the information requests or the action
Customer service is good, by the way, if you didn't know. It's very important. Anyone ever been to Disneyland or Disney World? There's, there's some customer service. I'll tell you what, I was pretty amazed with all the folks that were there. I met Goofy. And yeah, seen him before.
I have a whole question. I came over with an email. The first one is, does civil service seniority slash years of service move over if we move
I'll talk loud. Yes, everything carries over. Oh, thanks. Everything carries over just the same, so years of services, service would still apply, so nothing would change in terms of years of service.
More questions? I can tell she's got, she's eager.
Some time ago, many classified staff were giving the, given the first of what was to be a series to bring us to market level. This plan was, has since been abandoned. Would anything be done to remedy this? And they are interested in knowing how the powers-to-be feel about addressing this issue.
They're talking about the hay plan and the market adjustments that got stalled in the legislature.
Stalled?
Trying to be nice with them.
As part of the, when we talk about a broad salary plan of two to four years, I think the thought would be that we would attempt to, to look at the market adjustments and look at market factors. I think we're going to have to probably cooperate with some of the other campuses because we really can't conduct our own. But I believe that we would, within the next two to four years, attempt to at least look at those market issues. You know, that's, that's the intent.
I, prior to coming here, was in a system similar to what you're considering and that was looked at on a very regular basis because it looked, peer, peer institution, we have peers, we're always looking at our peers for comparative types of things. And we're always looking at classifications and reclassifications. So all those become a bit more robust because of the fact that you have the ability internally to do something. And so I think there's certainly, that's something for consideration. But I think we have to. I mean, there's a lot of data, it was part of my coming, but I know there was a number of things out there. As you know, there was also a recommendation for this year and last I heard, it hadn't got very far on legislative side. So that, that's just the nature of those types of things. That's, like I said, that, one of the differences is, is that, you know, the universities have the ability, let's say KU, to do certain types of things. So they have a 2% or something or other that impacts all, all employees and they have that opportunity to do that. And I think that from just talking to other CEOs, again, I have to emphasize, it's your decision. We all really feel strongly about anything we can do to help, that you want to try to find ways to invest and reinvest because your best, you know, your resources are right here, like best people. So how can we do those types of things? I also want to make emphasis, the board of regents, my bosses, have been very, very direct about providing opportunities to reinvest in employees. And this last year, we're great, asking each and every one of us add to our budget request an opportunity to provide additional resources to employees. Difficulty, of course, we weren't able to do that at the classified side. Again, I'd love to tell you what's going to look like for next year. I'll wait till the end of the session to see how things go. But we've already talked in our budget advisory group about how we need to budget accordingly and we need to find ways of doing it. For all of you to know that, you know, if, if you're not getting resource on one end, it means adding toward tuition, which means adding to cost. But I will tell you, the students last year, and I'm sure the students this year as well, knew what they were increasing tuition for and were very supportive of it. And they were also a group that, one thing we haven't failed to do since I've been here is to the spouse dependent program to go back and get your education at Emporia State University. That really is coming from tuition dollars and the students understood they would be investing more of their money in order to provide that type of program. So we're pretty grateful for the students and their leadership and their support. And so they, they do appreciate, they recognize it because they know there's a bottom line to them.
I have a question. Heard people ask and I'm kind of curious what to. Is there going to be reinstatement of the cost of living increase? Because we used to get colas on a regular basis and then they stopped. Are those going to be brought back?
I believe that would depend upon the recommendations of the budget committee to the president and his recommendations to the board of regents. Going back to what Michael just said, the board has been supportive of our including what we did last year for unclassified and what we could not do for classified. So we would take those same considerations into, into play for what the committee takes up and brings to him and what he takes of the board.
I smile about the cola. The first time I've heard that, it was, "What about cola?" I said, "Diet Coke for me."
It may be a diet.
So caffeine-free, though.
It may be a diet.
Well, root beer, well, I know there's no caffeine there.
Spicy.
Yes, well, lots of things are evil. Looking at me every day, that's just evil. That's just not right. That's one of the, I like all the pictures up there, is all those kids had all this hair and I was reminding them, someday. What other questions, comments? I'll hang around for a little bit before I leave to the airport.
I think it's, it's human nature to be suspicious and it seems like this has been portrayed on a positive note all the way through. And I'd like to know if any of the committee members or anyone has run across any negative things that we don't maybe know about?
Spill it, sister.
Well, I'm going to have to refer back to some of my committee members as well because they're the ones that really dug in the research at each of the region's universities and really read all that information much more thoroughly than I had the opportunity to do. I'll tell you, I have an aunt that worked at KU when they transitioned. I'm point-blank, blank asked her when we got ready to start. Did you see a change? She said, "My position?" I couldn't tell any difference.
What's her position?
She was in residential life as a programmer.
See, the custodians did see a change.
And that's what, like what I'm asking, what do you know?
What was the change that they saw?
When I called up there, I talked to one of the custodians and she told me that when they went to this.
They went to nights. They went 10:30 to 7:00 a.m. There's no shift differential and they don't have day positions except in residential, residential halls. And that's what took place then.
That can happen under state classified civil service, though.
But, and when I called up there to talk to them about the job openings, they start out at the same pay we are, but they're working nights. And if they're getting all these raises and stuff, why doesn't their pay scale start out better?
That's KU's decision. That's not necessarily what's going to happen here at ESU.
But we're going by their role is what you, right?
I said, "We are looking at everybody's." I did, I said, "We're going to take the best of, of what everybody has suggested." We aren't following KU to the letter. I promise you that. We've, we've looked at theirs, we've learned from some of their mistakes. We have used pieces from Fort Hays, we have used pieces from Pittsburgh State. Wichita State was behind us, so we haven't really used any of their materials because they were, they were lagging oh, about two or three months behind us. So we haven't really looked at any of their things, but when they get them published, we'll look at them as well because we're really trying to provide the best option for our employees.
I think Ray had a comment to make here. Yeah, a couple of thoughts. And the first one is that, to your point, with the, with the paid piece, one of the things that KU has done is they've, they've created basically a broadband. And so what they're saying is that that, that starting pay is perhaps the same, but what you don't see is, you don't see the layers on top of that that allows them to adjust that base rate based upon years of experience and qualifications and some of those sorts of things. So you may be right, that, that starting price point may be the same, but there are other options that they have, some flexibility that's available to them that currently we, we don't have. So that would be one of the points that I would make. The other point is to follow upon what Gwen said. In terms of changing those shifts, in terms of adjusting positions, the authority that supervisors have to apply policy to positions, we have all of that now currently under the civil service system. So that really functionally doesn't change those same mechanisms, that same authority, those same intentions to change jobs to fit what the business needs of the university and of the department would be, those still remain, so.
I'm glad, I'm glad you brought that up though, because I think it is good to compare what others have done and what they've learned from it.
Well, and with the very first meeting, I think I brought you a newspaper clipping on the, the, the questions and things that was, was in their paper. And it said that they were talking about the raises that they, they had gotten, but the custodians and the maintenance didn't get them. And you were going to give me an answer back on that? You were going to check it out? It's the final hour.
Yes, Ray did check on that with KU.
What, and, and what we, what we checked with was again, how it is that they handle those, those, that they apply those raises and, and it's applied across the board. So everybody that's in USS, they follow a very similar process, not exactly like what, what the Alternative Services Committee is proposing, but it's very similar. So those adjustments, those changes have been across the board. There may be particular cases affecting individuals that have been hired subsequently that that may be pointing back to, but by and large, again, it's a system review and, or application. Everybody in the, in the USS system receives a very similar rate. So individual groups, individual classifications and titles of positions are not excluded to the benefit of others. Everybody would be inclusive in it. And regardless of what KU does, that's the way that we have set this. And regardless of what KU does, that's the way that we have set this, when I say we have referred to the Alternative Services Committee. That was a very specific part of the conversation. And so the proposal that you're seeing would ensure that everybody in the USS, when there was a percent increase, everybody would receive a base same increase, and then there would be the opportunity for additional merit on top of that. So I think that concern is, is very clearly addressed in, in the proposal, so.
So folks, I think the order to keep in mind, and it's good to compare information, we have to figure out what's best for Ford State University, and for our employees.
Yeah, I was curious, I went to a seminar a couple of years ago of Kansas City, and a couple of the guys in class at lunchtime, they worked for KU, and neither one of them was happy with it. And they were both in mains, and I can't remember exactly how they detailed it, but they made it sound something to the effect that basically they eliminated all positions like electricians, carpenters, all that sort of stuff. They had just a couple people in each department, and the rest were floaters, could be shuffled around anywhere. I honestly don't remember exactly what he said, so this is anecdotal, but...
Turn the lights off for all the electricians here on, just by, it's interesting to me, but maybe, I've not heard that, but...
Yeah, and actually, one of the things that, that happened, let's see, it would have been about six years after the vote to move to USS. One of the things that KU did is that they actually, much like our residential life and our facilities, building services are two separate entities. Back in 2010, 2011, they recombined those. Now, through that recombination, some of the things that you're talking about, some of the changes in schedules, some of the changes in how it is that they filled positions, those occurred at that point, but that was a, a result of the restructuring. It had nothing to do with the USS. And again, what I would, what I would share with you is that same authority currently exists in the civil service system. So it, that potential could happen anywhere. So that doesn't change as a result of, of being the USS.
And just on an atmospheric level, how do you guys feel about the fact that, from the votes I've seen so far, one out of three people has been unhappy with this? Every vote I've seen posted on the Board said 60% approval, which means 30-some percent. Is, because I haven't heard any good details, other than basically it's moving the responsibility from the state to your office. It's now here in town. So, but no one can tell me that there's, everyone says, "Oh, nothing will change." So why do it?
Oh, exactly. I can tell you why I do it. Why I want to do it personally.
Yeah, what I think would be good is like President Charnock was saying, here a while back, we had raises across the board for everybody except classified staff. And we, some people haven't had raises for a few years. And the only way you can get a raise is to be reclassified. And personally, I'm not happy with the state of Kansas because of that. I was a state employee before, I worked for the president in El Dorado, I worked for a school district, I've, I've been, been there before, it's not just here, it's all state employees that are in classified service. My opinion, or whatever that's worth, it's nothing, it's nothing. We have, my belief is that we have a greater opportunity to influence local, local government, local university government than we would the state, than we would the legislature. I hesitate to think I have any influence over the legislature lately at all, but if we're unhappy with something, like you said, it's local, if we're unhappy with something, we can get together as a group, we will have our university support staff, like we have the classified support staff, shared government to the keys, we will have input, we will have say, and we can, I think, influence things for the better than, but we have more of a chance to influence things for the better than we do now. Now you can go up to a legislature and you can say, "Man, I haven't had a raise for eight years." And they're like, "Sorry about your lead." And that's about all we can do, that doesn't seem to be much...
But where do we get our money? Same people?
I'm going to let them worry about that.
No, no, I mentioned to you, there are, there are sources, you know, some are, if you know about the university budget, but, you know, there's auxiliary, so some of you, we generate money one way, we, you know, tuition dollars, and frankly, the way we've taken care of longevity, which has been for the classified, the way we've taken care of them, is through tuition increases, because there's not been additional resources allocated from the state level. So, you know, you can balance it all you want, but here's the revenue, here's the type of thing you're investing in. If the revenue's increased, that means if you want to keep up to a certain level, you have to find another source of revenue. So that's part of our job, part of mine too, is to find other ways to do that. And so that's where the, the tuition dollar increases have helped kind of build on those things and reinvest in people.
And then do you price yourself out of the market?
Well, I would, I would think, I would think we were not going to do that, for a lot of good reasons, because we understand that. You know, you, you know, we've got a lot of really good people here, and I, I just love the students, they make me smile every day, well, most of them do. And you know the ones who aren't. But, you know, the, the fact is, is that we've gotten a lot of good feedback, they, they're part of that advisory board, and they're applying recommendations, and I take it really seriously, I think about that very carefully, all of us do, all the CEOs do. But we also know how important it is to reinvest into the institution, and the best investment, and I've said this publicly several times, is our people. And, and I, I feel that way, and I pride to the very best of our abilities as our team to do what we can, and continue to do that. I wish I had a crystal ball, I'll tell you what it's going to look like. And to your question too, I, I just would, you have to make the best decisions for yourself, what you think is to the best. And I appreciate looking at what others have done, all I can tell you is that my experience has been, we have to do it the Ford State way, we have to do it with the best interest of the folks that are here, which is going to be different in some respects. The current system, which could work fine, it's set up in such a way that you don't have the same opportunities to think about it. You know, what, what Ford State might do would be probably a little bit different than maybe Fort Hayes, or be different than Pitt, or KU, or K-State, or Wichita State, because it's what the feedback we've received from here says, "These are the things that we think are important, these are the things that we think where we need to invest some more of our resources." And so however you decide, to the best interest, all I would say is that you have to think about that long-term, I wish I could tell you, you know, the next several years, there's going to be more resources coming this way. You know, I, I just don't know. And, you know, and yet you're right, you know, people vote, you know, I'm from Chicago, I voted early and often, and, but I don't think I get, I have enough votes to change some things. And so as we're working with legislators, I mean, they're good folks, remember, we've put them in there to make tough decisions and be involved in certain types of things, we want to do everything we can to support what they're trying to do, and find ways to be efficient, effective, but we're still in this business called Ford State University, and you make it happen every day.
I think what goes along with, that sometimes gets lost in the puzzle, is it's not just an increase in tuition that impacts that, but it's an increase in enrollment. And everybody in this room, whether you realize it or not, has a direct impact on increasing enrollment. I see visitors, I see new incoming students, and, you know, the comments that they make about how wonderful our campus looks, how clean buildings are, how new remodeled projects look, has been nothing but positive. And so the work you do is reflected amongst those people who come to campus and, and are thinking about coming to school here. So the work you put out does have an impact on the increase in enrollment. We can increase tuition, but you can double that by bringing in, you know, more students that are paying that increase in tuition. So the, just rest assured that the work you do is, will be recognized. Will the legislatures recognize that? Probably not, but I do have faith that our administration will recognize that. They'll see it, they know that that extra money is not just from an increase in tuition, part of that is from the effort that we have all put forward to recruit more students, bring more students to campus, and to keep them here.
And thank you for that, because part of the decision for this year was, we had to have a certain number of our mix of our enrollment growth in order for us to, to invest into individuals, and that worked out well for the fall. And we're going to continue to build on that, as you know, there's other schools in the state that are also working on it. And so we all know that, but our continued success there, you know, we're raising private dollars, which usually goes to a number of things. I just had a chance to meet with a very kind donor, who, I said, "Thank you for your very, very kind gift." He said, "What else can I do for you?" I said, "Introduce me to your more rich friends." But, you know, we're not to find private dollars to, to invest and reinvest, but as, as we grow, as we build our, our excitement, as we build with the community, lots of things, lots of buzz going on, that really helps, because success breeds success. When people are excited about things, folks are willing to invest more. And the same thing, I think, across the state. So, you know, I'm excited about that, and every day, and very, very fortunate to be here.
I was just wondering, as if we, if we make the switch, will we have a bigger seat at the table when it comes to analyzing the jobs that we have now, to determine how many we need? Right now, we have no say in that, and I realize that, but as we work the policy for this new system, we put that in there, we have X amount of people at that table.
Yeah, there, there would be USS people on the Budget Committee, just like their class, the classified leaderships on the Budget Committee now. So it, it would be the concerns they bring to the table.
Probably the, the difference there would be is that obviously you have, your, your voice would be such, "Here's some things that we as a collective group want to focus on," and I always tell folks, "Focus. You can't do it all at once, but you have the ability, because it's, it's a local voice, and it does provide a little opportunity with, for us to think about, well, is that going to help move us forward?"
I just worry sometimes that as we go from management to this level, to this level, clear down to the people like us that do the work, that that gets lost, hey, they might need that position filled, or it seems like we never get positions filled anymore, I realize the money's short, but in order to increase enrollment, you need those people to make your campus look good.
We're not show of management.
And this had a huge impact on, on the institution over several years, we've had to deal with some other challenges. We've had one just recently, of course, from the last, but, and I'm an incurable optimist, and you work well with what things you have, and you, and you've got good people, we'll have to make the best choices we have, I just hope, folks, here's the resources, here's where we're investing it, and they have to balance off to the best of our ability. But now that's talked about very, very well in our budget advisory group, and, and with, with our vice president group on a regular basis. And so, and by the way, I, I hope, I try to be approachable, and folks, people walk up and, trust me, if, if you don't believe it, people do bend my ear every so often, it's hard to believe. The students just tweet me, so you can start tweeting me, I suppose, if you want, but no, people will bring up to my attention, but one thing I'll tell you, what they bring up, which I appreciate even more so, is they say, "By the way, you know, so-and-so really went the extra mile today, I just want you to know that." So we'll send a little note, or make a phone call, that I appreciate, you know, sometimes other things, but the fact that each person's looking at each other and wanting to be sure that, "Michael, would you send this out to someone, or send a little note, or thank them next time you see?" I mean, I appreciate that. So if that's happening now, that's a good sign. I like, this morning I signed 212 things.
You counted?
Yep, I did. At 6 o'clock in the morning, you got to do something. You know, I get home late, you know, I'm sitting there, I've got one, two, three, about 211, I said, "212," and all right. And there were thank yous, and recognitions, and just lots of different types of things, but, you know, hopefully you got a birthday card from me one point or other, you know, I think that's important stuff.
About the 200 signature, probably didn't look like yours anymore.
Oh, it didn't look like it from number one. Yeah, it's amazing what, you know, how, how it changes, you know, they say that when people are in different roles, how it changes, and, and so I would say, I don't know, if somebody looked at my handwriting, if those are worth anything someday, I'm, I'm sure it's going to be worth less by 212. But, you know, you got to do what you can.
Okay, back to my suspicious nature. We kind of dodged the question on who knows something negative that we're not talking about, or that we don't know.
Okay, what if it don't work, and we can't get back to what?
No, I mean facts, does anyone know any fact that makes this disadvantage?
Okay, I'm just using a sample is, if we switch...
That's it.
Are we going to be able to get back to where we are now, if we get in that trouble?
If we change our minds and say this, we don't even want to do this, we want to go back to classified, would we ever have the opportunity to go back to classified?
It's not in the statute, so a new statute would have to be created, I think.
Law would have to change.
It's not in the current law.
The Board of Regents, since it ultimately depends on a decision of the Board of Regents, theoretically, they could come along and say, "Well, we'll tear up that land, we didn't approve it." And so that would cause staff to be back in the classified. That, that topic, quite frankly, hasn't come up, so it, it would be charting new territory, but it hasn't.
I'm, I'm just worried about if it don't work, and then it's going to be, our benefits is just, they're going to have to make up somehow.
The, the benefits, the statute clearly specifies that benefits carry over as they are now. So capers, health insurance...
So where are they going to come up with the money if it don't work? I mean, if...
I think...
Okay, we've got state government right now, what do we got?
Really?
Cover of butts. I'm sorry, after that.
The bulk of the university is funded with a combination of state money and tuition money.
The money's not going to come from different sources than what it does now, whether we move state clas, classified employees or if we move to USS. The money is still coming from the same sources, and the only reason those amounts are going to change is if the state legislature makes a change to the amount, or if we change tuition.
After they get something changed, they keep wanting more and more, it just seems like a never-ending game. So that, if you have, like, the same now, then they can't pick on something else. I don't know, I think what it comes down to, Paul, it is, they're going to...
Let me, in one way, I mean...
And it's just like...
You're, they're right, you know, some of you may not know, some of you are probably paid out of state general, some of you are paid out of tuition, some of you are paid out of, you know, different types depending on, on the area. You're right, if, if, if one source of funds is less, you have to make tough decisions. That impacts, and we've not built things over several years now, and that's always going to be a challenge. And so that, I don't think that's going to change, no matter what, which way you decide, because there's only so many dollars, only so much revenue generated, and there's those here that are investments long-term, so I'm not sure...
What I'm trying to say is, what happens if the state, this ain't state no more, and they, we're not going to make it, will we?
We're not a state?
We'll still be state employees.
What happens if they keep going on and try to get...
I mean, the same thing would happen if we were classified or university support staff. They still have power over our benefits, or...
I think, okay, one thing to keep in mind, all of us are state employees, and all of us would continue to be state employees, it's just a different category of state employees.
Oh, I see, well, like public, I'm using grade school or something like that.
Right, right.
They do get paid more, but they do have a lot more benefits, but they're state also, so I just didn't understand.
No, school dis, school district employees are state employees.
They get retirement plans, but they're not state employees. They have capers, they can participate in capers, but because they're a public employee, they're an employee of the school.
There is some classifieds there.
No, no.
No, they're not.
They're employees of the school.
They're all different. Like municipalities can participate in capers, like cities and stuff, but they're not state employees.
They're not civil, civil service employees.
They're not.
As a matter of fact. State civil service employees, so not that.
Okay, back to Karen's question. Did any committee members find anything negative in any of the research she did?
I can't find anything...
Why any downfalls?
I, I guess to Karen's point, the, the thing I would say is, nobody in the, in the years that I've worked on with the committee, nobody's whispered in my ear a problem with converting that, that doesn't exist in, in the current structure. So no, no new item has surfaced in, in the work I've done on it. I would say that, you know, you, you can go anywhere and talk to people that do and don't like anything, and, and people who, who didn't care for the previous may not care for it, or vice versa. So I imagine you could go to K, I know I've gone to KU and talked to people that think it's the greatest things in the slide spread. Obviously, there are other people who, who don't think that. So it, and, you know, to the point of... So it, and you know, to the point of 60% versus 40%, well, you know, that's a, that's a landslide in a national election. So, you know, the fact that, that there's a percentage that didn't want it, that's, you know, that's kind of true in everything.
The people I've talked to who are against it or have bad things to say about it have all been people who are not informed or are people who have a story where someone had a bad experience and they think that's what's going to happen here. I think it really comes down to our benefits don't change, our protection changes only in the fact that if you are terminated or you have a bad review that you want to appeal, the deciding factor is the local committee of ESU. My peers, the people I've worked with, it's, it's you guys, it's us that makes that decision instead of some board up in Topeka that doesn't really know what ESU's doing. The raises and the job classifications can fit, my job, my job classification doesn't say anything about what I do. I'm a tech support consultant level two. That's an IT classification, but I do all kinds of things. I do AAV, I do all this other stuff. So university support staff, they can say, "Okay, Steve does this and this is his new classification." And they can say, "Okay, our custodians do this and it's exactly what they do." They can say, "Our maintenance people do this." They can say, the university can say, "Here's what our people really do, here's how we're going to classify them." And then they're going to look at the national average and say, okay, or the, our peers, and they're going to say, "This is what that classification that we have come up with that accurately reflects what our people do, this is what they should be paid and this is what we can afford to pay them." I mean, and look at that. Right now, my pay is determined by a committee in Topeka. My classification is determined by people in Topeka. So is my, am I putting my hat in with the university or am I putting my hat in with the state? I mean, that's really what it comes down to.
I have a 213 flight out of Kansas City. I drive fast, but not that fast. But I want to let you know, I appreciate all your time. Please email me, you know, text me, tweet me, whatever it is. If you have some questions, we'll do our very best. I just thank you for your time. I have some folks that are going to still be here and just, you know, if, you know, if there's things that we can't, we'll do our very best to respond. We'll do our very best to try to look at this as broadly as we can. The bottom line is, and this is sincere, just thank you for what you do for Emporium State University. This, this is a great place and a great, great community. And my wife, I feel blessed to be here and blessed to be part of that. But again, it's because of all of you that make a big difference here. So thank you. And last, I'll add, I'll just ask this, when you see a student, at least give them a high five. Let them know you care because it makes a huge difference. And I will tell you, when I talk to donors, folks who are very kind and willing to give back at different levels to the institution, it's, it's the memories they have of the relationships with people like, like in the room right now that's made a difference for them. And so it's fun for me, not only to talk about the faculty that do folks, but they talk about other folks they've, they've hung with or talked with or something like that. So just know that you make a difference each and every day and I appreciate that. So go Hornets, Stingers up, bro, let's keep going. Signing a sting out of the layoff.
Okay, before we get to more questions, I want to, I want to make a comment to Karen's question. The only thing that we found that's different is on the appeals board, like Steve said, we would lose the state civil service board. So your final won't be in Topeka, it will be here, local. That's one thing. The other thing is you will no longer have state employment preference across all state agencies. It would be here at ESU and hopefully we can visit with the other Regents universities and set up something that would work with this new USS amongst the Regents. That's a thought we've had, but the state preference would go away in layoff cases.
Okay, thank you.
So those are, those are the two things that we could come up with really quick that we found that were different.
If we don't pass it, if we don't pass it this year, I heard that you're going to do it next year no matter what.
The legislature might.
The legislature might, but no, there's no plans.
There, there are no plans to do that. And by, at KU, for example, they brought it up to a vote once, it failed, and then they brought it up again two or three years later. So it can be brought up again. I don't think, well, for one thing, I think the people that have served on this committee don't want to serve on another committee for another 10 months. So another committee might bring it up, but I can point to about 10 people on this one that say, "Uh-uh." I don't believe that at all.
No, there's no plans for that. And I will tell you, Fort Hays State brought it up, I think, when the statute was originally passed, that's when the HAY plan kind of came into effect and then, so they kind of put the brakes on it and said, "Let's see what the state legislature's going to give us." And they passed it this year. So, you know, that's, that's one thing that, it's, it's, I think ESU even, for a short period of time, even maybe even discussed it when the statute was originally written because this statute was written by KU with their legislators' help. They developed this.
One thing that might be causing the rumor to float around that it's going to happen a year from now no matter what is the legislature had a bill in the harbor last year that would eliminate the classified service and cause everybody to become unclassified. So that caused me to think, mm, this is going to happen anyway. So that may, those two issues might fall.
And that affects all state classified employees, not just the Regents. That would have affected literally every state classified employee.
And that bill did not come up this year, so for what it's worth. That doesn't mean it won't tomorrow.
So let's say that all the other Regents, you know, all the Regents' schools are, have this on the boards to vote for or have voted for it. Let's say everybody passes it. Can the Board of Regents just say, "You know what? We're approving everybody doing this and we're just going to say all universities are support staff?"
No, the statute doesn't allow that.
Okay.
The statute specifies that a referendum must occur and must pass before thou consider it.
Yeah, I was curious.
Great questions today. Thank you so much. Any more?
Does the retirement change?
No. Capers does not change, health insurance does not change. The only thing that's changing is longevity and we're putting it back in for everybody instead of those that have been hired prior to a certain date in 2000.
One thing I would want to clarify, so nothing in capers changes as a result of moving to the USS. The legislature is currently talking about changes to the caper system. They've made a number of changes to the caper system already. Y'all who've been here prior to, to 2008, you've seen your contributions to capers go up to 5% and it's going to go up to 6% next year. So those are legislative changes, those aren't controlled here. We don't have authority over what happens at capers. So as a result of moving to the USS or as a result of staying in the classified service, that would have no impact at all on, on retirement because those decisions are all needed in Topeka.
I was, I have not been here long enough to be involved with the longevity, so I don't know anything about it. If they did bring it back, would I be backdated to the hired date or, I don't know anything about how it works.
Longevity is earned after 10 years of service. It's currently, what it was paid last year was $40 a year. This original statute was 40. At one point, the legislature was generous and bumped it to 50. They backed it back down to 40. And so once you hit your anniversary date of 10 years, you would receive 10, $50 or $40 for a year of service up to a maximum of $1,250. So if you were hired in 2010, right now, under classified, you will not see longevity in 2020. If we go USS in 2020 on your anniversary, the paycheck with your anniversary in it, you would see a longevity pay of 500 or 400. We are recommending $50, but the statute right now is 40. So we, that hasn't been approved yet, that has to go through Board of Regents, but we would see at least a minimum of 400 in the next year, 440. But if you're hired after, was it June 15th? May 15th? June 15th of 2008 was the cutoff. So if you were hired after that date as classified civil service, you will never see longevity if you're hired after that date, no matter how many years you work here. USS will reinstitute it. Your years of service that you currently worked will count towards that longevity pay. Does that answer that good?
When you go to vote, you have to have your E-number. Do you have to show it on a paper or you just have to have it?
You have to enter it.
How it's going to work, we're going to send out a link. If you have access to a computer, you can do it from your desk. If you do not have access to a computer easily, you can come here to the union, to the lower level between international ed and career services. Thank you. And we will have two computers set up there where you can go and vote. It's going to be a screen that pops up and you're essentially going to mark yes or no. You're going to enter your E-number and your birthday. And that's going to verify that you are a classified employee who is benefits eligible and then your vote will be cast and you'll get a screen that says your vote has been cast. Thank you. And you're done. Those votes will all go into that electronic system, we'll then pull out a total. Your vote will not be tied so that anybody can see how any individual voted. It's just going to say that your number, cast a vote.
When will we know?
We are having the votes audited. We are hoping to have an answer the afternoon of the day following the vote, so the 6th. The committee will meet on the 6th and hopefully the votes will be audited prior to our meeting in the afternoon and then we will announce the vote.
It had a paper saying that you could vote earlier than...
There is an advanced ballot or absentee ballot auction that begins tomorrow. It's from 8:00 to 5:00 Friday, Monday and Tuesday. Okay?
Where do you go?
Human Resources. But make sure you have your E-number so that when you go and make sure you enter it correctly before you hit the submit button or the cast your ballot button so that we make sure that you're voting as you. And it will give you an error if you enter your E-number wrong but your birthday right. It'll say, "Oh, no, we don't find you in the system." So you have to enter it correctly, that combination, for it to work. And we will have tech support on the 6th when we're doing it electronically.
And they won't be classified personnel that'll be helping.
And also, if you go down and vote at the lower level, there won't be classified employees and there won't be committee members that I'm aware of down there. It will be unclassified commission helping you if you have a problem. So it won't be anybody that has any stake in the game. We'll all be at our offices voting.
Unless there's a problem, I might be voting.
But who's going to audit the votes?
Brian Denton, who is our internal auditor here at the university, will be counting the votes and he doesn't have a stake in the game either. So we have tried to make this as, our whole goal as the committee was to make this as unbiased a presentation as possible, to give you the facts and give you the ability to make an informed decision. And I hope we've accomplished that. That was our whole goal, is to say, classified is this way, USS is this way, you decide what works best for you. And that's how you cast your vote. Any other questions? I really, really appreciate you coming out today and getting those questions answered. If you think of something, please feel free to email myself. My name's Gwynn Speed, one of the committee members, President Sean Rock, HR, Ray Houck, you know, please let us know and we're more than happy to help. We want to make sure that you have your questions and concerns answered. So we'll be around here for a few minutes if you have any other questions. If not, thank you for coming.